I'd like to call it to order the regular meeting of the Farver School Committee for April 10th. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Larve.
Here.
Ms. Pereira.
Here.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Deb, do we have any citizens input?
No, we do not.
We're going to skip over recognition awards right now just to give ourselves a little bit of time, but we'll go to item number four. Any subcommittee updates? None. Superintendent's report, item number five, Superintendent Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight we have two updates. One of them is an event that Durfee High School hosted, Vamj of Port. Durfee High School hosted 50 students from Group Ribbedur, which is a group made up of three private schools in the Port area. The students from Port spent five days here in the area, immersing themselves in the culture by attending classes at Durfee. They even attended the junior prom and assimilated quite naturally. They were amazed by the school and all that it had to offer our students. Students were particularly impressed with the TV studio, the granite grill, fashion design, and cosmetology. Students were also able to experience various sport activities. Important to note is that students were able to participate in the junior prom wearing attire supplied by the Durfee Formal Closet, where they collect gowns and give it to people who need them. And the cosmetology students were able to help them with hair and makeup so that they could fully participate in the junior prom. They were grateful that they were able to have that experience with their new friends. I think our Durfee students were more impressed with how their guests assimilated so easily. They felt comfortable at Durfee from the start and took advantage of every opportunity to experience Durfee pride. In addition to being Durfee hilltoppers, the visiting students were able to visit some neighboring restaurants, colleges, and cities such as Boston and New York City, and of course, shopping. We have some of our Durfee students, 27 of them, will be traveling to Port during their April break, where students will also have an opportunity to be immersed in the culture. I think it's safe to say that the experience was a positive one for both the hosts as well as the guests. I want to thank the Durfee team for welcoming the students from Port, and I look forward to hearing about our students' experience there. We also have a hiring update. Since the last meeting, last month, we have hired 34 people. We have had 12 resignations and one retirement. We hired one administrator, eight teachers, 11 paraprofessionals, seven nutrition workers, two custodians, two safety officers, two SNANs, and one clerical employee. In addition, we held a recruitment event in late March that had 58 attendees. The majority of the attendees and applicants for this event were operational, with 25 being educator or educator support staff applicants. Applicants were shared across all departments, and I know this is a big, big hiring season for principals, so everybody is scrambling to bring those applicants in. And the district's also attending the DESI Virtual Job Fair this month, as well as the Merck Job Fair in Boston at BU. Both of those will focus on educated positions. And finally, our district is planning to host another recruitment fair on April 29th, if all goes well. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Superintendent Potts. With that, I believe we can go to our recognition awards, and we'll go down to the front of the stage. We have two presentations, and we'll do that right now.
Thank you very much. So this person here has worked for the school district for many years, and the city has an employee who deserves to be recognized. Every day when this nominee, the person nominating her, brings her son to school, she can be seen on Elsbury Street assisting students to make sure they safely cross this high-traffic area. Although this is her job, how she performs it daily goes above and beyond. She has forged relationships with a population of students that range in age and life experiences. Her friendly and caring personality shines through with every fist bump she gives to students, waves to commuters as they pass by, and conversations with students as they cross. What a great way for students to be greeted as they get ready to start their new day. As a parent of students who attend the Farver Public Schools, I appreciate people like Peg who make it a point to be a positive part of the lives of students. I have had the pleasure of having a few conversations with her and learned this is her nature, and prior to working as a crossing guard, she worked helping children in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If you are ever traveling in that area during arrival or dismissal time, I hope you are able to see her in action. We want to say congratulations and thank you to Peg McGowan. Mrs. McGowan, if we have you in the front for a picture? You're not getting away that easy. And we have one more award for a student, which is awesome. We received word this week that Durfee's student painting he submitted for Scholastic Art Awards has been selected as a National Gold Key winner. This is extra special news, as he was competing against thousands of students from across the country. He will be invited to walk across the stage at Carnegie Hall in New York City on June 6th to receive his award, along with the list of other artists and writers who were selected from around the country. In addition, his teacher, Ms. Heather Pereira, was also awarded as a Gold Key educator. We'd like to recognize and thank and say congratulations to one of our great students at Durfee High School, Ishmael Alves.
Okay. We have no student comment tonight, so I'm going to ask for item number seven, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First one is minutes of the Technology Subcommittee from 3:9, and the Regular School Committee meeting minutes from 3:20. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item number eight is approval of travel requests.
Motion to approve travel requests.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on a number of travel requests. Any comment or discussion on travel requests? Hearing none. Deb, I'll ask you to please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item number nine is an acceptance of donations. We have two donations tonight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the donations before the superintendent fills us in on them? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item number 10, oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent, please.
Okay. On behalf of Farver Public Schools, request acceptance of $20,000 donation from University of Connecticut. This donation is to be used to pay for the IMTSS work here in Fall River. And on behalf of Henry Lord Community Schools, to Dr. Barnhard, request the acceptance of one large playground communication board, one small social communication board, one small using the communication board plate, a donation from Doug Flutie Foundation for Autism. This donation will be used to provide visual support for children to access with playground-specific language and to promote inclusion across the school environment. And that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Item 10, approval of contracts. We have a number of contracts here. If anybody wants to put a hold on anyone, I'd ask them to please point it out now. If not, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Can we please hold Paper?
I'm sorry, Mr. Agia, which one?
Paper.
Page two, called Paper.
Okay, Paper. Paper Education. Any other one would someone like to take out? With that one being held, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's call the roll on those, Deb.
Mr. Chair. I wanted to hold it just, I had a question on the, I see things in here that are part of the new school project, and I'm wondering why we, why they're not part of, they weren't part of the project, and now we're paying them for out-of-house budget. I'm assuming that's where they're coming from.
Which ones are those, Mr. Agia?
Field hockey, excuse me, field hockey goals and, like, I know that we're doing the project separate, but typically those things would be included in a budget. Are we closed out?
Well, the budgets are tight, so not knowing where we're going to be, I, they needed new goals for those fields. So that's what this is about. I don't have the funds budgeted in, so in certain instances, it was fully budgeted, the baseball field, everything was included. In the turf fields, it was the carpet that was included and the scoreboard, and in the stadium field, exactly the same.
Yes, I'm not opposed to, obviously, we needed the, we need the items, but when, I'm just trying to think through the process of when you close out the building project, if there's funds left over in that building project, if we haven't got that down to zero, these are valuable, like, we keep on spending school dollars for what would or could be part of that project. So if we start spending the school dollars, and then the project closes and there's $100,000 left in that project, we can't get this money back? Or what?
So, Mr. Agia, what I'm hoping is, is that as projects close out, the contingency dollars and any extra funds would move to the next project, from the next project to the next project till finally at field number five, which is the one we haven't bid out yet, which is a JV, baseball and JV softball. So at the end of that project, those residual funds can be used for field accessories.
Hypothetically, if there's $250,000 left in the Durfee bond project.
Yes.
Left over, you're saying that we're going to spend that money for school department, not just automatically revert back to the city?
The only project that the city is funding is the 2.4, the baseball field. Everything else is funded through the school department.
I mean, this project, for this building I'm talking about.
That's exactly it. So the only project that's being funded by the city, bonded by the city, is the baseball field. Everything else has been done in-house.
But I'm saying the Durfee, the $263 million project.
That is closed out.
And was there any money left over?
No.
So you spent it to zero?
Spent it to zero.
Even with the money that we're paying for all of these things that were?
Yes, we spent it down to zero.
So if we, to add all those up, we would just be a few hundred thousand dollars that we've put in on the school side?
Yes.
Basically, but there's not, there's no more money in the?
No, there isn't.
It doesn't stay open for a year, whatever the?
No, closes out, and basically, the only thing that we're waiting for is reimbursement from MSBA. But it's dollars that were already spent on the city side.
And if they, if something, God forbid, goes really south on this project now, where would we get that money from?
Depends on where it's at, in warranty. So the items that are in warranty would be covered within the project by the contractors.
And if it's a non-warranty?
If it's a non-warranty item, then it's coming out of maintenance.
Thank you, I yield.
Okay, so we still have the one hold? We have a motion and a second? Could, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Paper Education America on page four, page eight, six, whatever it is. Mr. Agia.
Yeah, my question is, how long have we had this?
We first contracted with Paper for the 21-22 school year, and the contract was extended without additional money being paid through this school year. So we had a slow start in the 21-22 school year when we first, when we first contracted with them, so they extended our contract so that we'd have a full year of using the program before we elected whether or not to renew.
Yep, and I see some of the data on usage, but can you just summarize what exactly that does?
Sure. So we originally contracted for grades six through 12, every single student, and all of our schools serving the middle grades, as well as the high schools, started using Paper. It's primarily an out-of-school tutoring program. So it allows students access 24/7 to tutoring online. Students can get on the platform to ask questions about pretty much any content area. They offer support in Spanish as well as English. And for writing purposes, students in their ELA classes, social studies classes, really in any classes where writing was an assignment, they can submit draft, draft writing and get some feedback. So as part of our initial process, we looked at the feedback that Paper was offering students to see if it aligned with the kind of first draft feedback we would want our students to get as part of the writing process, confirmed that it was, and so schools started using it, you know, more for those purposes, larger writing assignments and making it part of the writing process.
So on the usage, it doesn't show how many students? It shows sessions, basically? Do we have any data on? I'm just curious.
I do. I apologize because I don't have it with me, but we do have student, individual student data. I will say that what we see in the data as we look at it month to month are really kind of peaks, and I think it aligns very often with larger writing assignments and things of that nature, preparation for debate, kind of things like that, as students are preparing their speaking points. And so we see spikes in the data, and in most cases, it's classroom-specific or grade-specific around common assignments. So coming into this new budget piece, where we were going to renew for a year, we went back to the schools and said, where are you using this the most? Where are we getting the most bang for our buck? Where do you want to continue to support it? And so we ended up, that's where we see like a smaller bill, basically, because we're contracting for a fewer number of students.
Right, so it's not all students, is what you're?
It's not, so the way the pricing works is, we pay per student, but it's entirely possible that we would have a student that doesn't use it. But their pricing model is set up so that they say, every single one of your students can use it for this price, but I'm sure that it's priced out that way because they recognize that every student is going to be online every night with a tutor.
Yeah, and you're saying that we have analysis on how many students use it, we just don't, you don't have it in front of you today?
Yeah, it's not here.
As part of this.
Yeah.
One of the things when I first, I had heard about this for a few years, and I was hearing that it wasn't used as much as it should have been for $150,000 or whatever the price was at the time. But then as I'm looking at it now, I would think the high school, the more advanced high school would be more, and it's less. Is that?
Yeah, and so I think that, I think that is representative of particular grade levels that are accessing it the most as part of their process. So it was always part of our goal, especially in the fall, when we recognized that students would be writing college essays that may or, you know, they may or might, may not have access to a tutor, a writing coach outside of the school day, that they would have the same access to that kind of feedback. So I think that's what we ended up seeing at the high school, where there'd be more of these like writing events or particular assignments that would elicit more response from students and more participation.
So the page that says site usage year-to-date reflecting on success, where it says Durfee High 518, what exactly is that?
So that is, when you see, I'm sorry, what page is this?
Page four.
Page four. So that's a total of 518 interactions. So that could be, you know, part of that could be just essays, and I think that for Durfee High School, it is primarily that. But I can get that specific data.
Yeah, I'm just, to me, it's a big number.
So I will say that moving forward, so Durfee is only contracting for the coming year for two grades, grades 11 and 12. And I think it's because that's where they saw and were able to support the best usage over the past year, and so they're only moving forward with those two grades.
So with the 3,300 students, it doesn't, only includes half of Durfee?
Yes.
I just think it's something to look at a little deeper. I'm not, I'm just curious of how much bang we're getting for the buck for $150,000, and thankfully, we have, you know, funds to do that, but just don't want to give them away, and I don't think you want to either, so.
No, I agree. I mean, I think that what we've seen and what we've had in our discussions with them is around this idea of total minutes, and I think that's probably, I think that's in here, I think I included that. You know, 93,599 minutes that basically were billed out for reviewing our student work, and then the 162,000 minutes of classroom and after-school academic support, doing that tutoring piece. And so even though it's, even though we pay it per student, when we look at the number of hours in total our students have spent online with them or having their papers reviewed and getting feedback and interacting in that way, the dollar amount per hour that we're paying, it matches, right? It would cause, if we were paying, if we had the availability of teachers, our own teachers who were available for their contracted rate at any hour of the day and through the night, and we billed out for those hours, it's how much Paper would actually cost. And so even though they bill out per student, the actual number of hours worked by the tutors does match the dollar amount.
Yep. You've said a couple times Papers, like doing student Papers?
Yes.
So how does that work? That they, they go to this place, they send them their draft, they give them some feedback, and then how does, what is the grading on that? Wouldn't that affect the grades?
So what happens, I've seen it in use in schools where a student is able to do their first draft, and it's optional. They can either submit their first draft to Paper, or they can get peer feedback, and teachers will build it in as choice. I've seen that work. I've seen some people who, some teachers who just make it part of the writing process, first draft goes out to Paper. So a student gets their draft back with feedback, needing a clearer thesis statement, or you only gave one supporting detail, you're going to want to add more supporting details, use a quote from the text and things like that. And so they get that draft. The teachers have access to the feedback that they receive from the Paper tutor, so they can see what the student submitted as a first draft and then what corrections were made.
And the teacher has access?
Yeah. And we also have access to all of the transcripts in terms of when students are, when they're interacting with an online tutor, to see what kinds of questions students are asking and what kind of responses they're receiving.
And I'm assuming that you, that the principals have asked for this?
They have. So when we originally contracted, we had all of the principals meet with a representative from Paper after we had done some initial information sharing, and then we, I've met with principals and spoken to principals individually about how we wanted to move forward with the contract, and that's how we ended up with a smaller contract, and not for the entire number of students over 5,000, was what we contracted for the first time.
Great, if you could just get us that data whenever, I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much, I yield.
Anything further on Papers to approve? I'm looking for a second.
I need a motion.
Motion a second? Yeah, I have it.
No, I need a motion.
I need a motion a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Contracts? I just have two?
Grants.
Grants, I'm sorry. Grants, two of them. Any discussion on the grants? All right, looking for a motion and a second?
Motion to approve grants.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Committee of the whole, 12-1, is a discussion and vote to approve the man murals as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Pacico.
So the request before you tonight is to have a professional come in and take a look at the man murals and get an idea about what it would take to digitize them, and whether or not we would do any prep work prior to that work. So if they need to be cleaned, we'll have, I'll come back to you, but if they're ready, or camera-ready, so to speak, then they will perform that particular part of the project, and then we'll be able to look at what that looks like. The hope is, is that we can digitize, there's a lot of steps in between all of this, copyright... this, copyright, you know, rules that we have to follow, but in the meantime, this would be a first step. Quite a few years ago, we had a company come in to figure out if we could move those murals to, to this building and install them here, possibly in this auditorium. The issue was, is that the way they were attached to the walls at, um, the, uh, the building, that 290 Rock, um, the wall would have to come with it, and obviously, that's not an option. It was a little over a million dollars to move them here. So this is what we would like to look into, so that we could reproduce these, and then whether it would be part of a traveling exhibition, or whether it would be located in a couple of different buildings, schools, um, possibly some, some city buildings. We're just not sure what that, that value is right now, and we're not sure the, the product that we're going to receive. So the ask is for 7,500, which will get us, um, a one shot at, um, that particular piece that we select, and then we'll know whether or not we want to move forward with a bigger project. So we'll come back to you as, as a product that you can look at, see if that's something that the committee would like to do moving forward. Ms. Roderick's is here, who's been ushering this project for a long time. I, I did work with her in my days on the CPA board, and, um, we started that process, and then, um, there's a, there's a few things in between all of that, and, and here we are today, hoping to move this to the next step.
I'm looking for a motion in a second?
You have a motion.
Any discussion, I'm sorry, Mr. Agnew?
So you mentioned the CPA, is it, this not eligible for funding?
It's a reproduction, so it's not. It's not preserving the product.
So they, did they pay to clean them, or?
They didn't, they paid for the initial, uh, if I'm not mistaken, we did get an award at some point. Did we get an award at any point from CPA?
What about cleaning? Did he ask?
Yeah.
What about?
Cleaning, and when we had someone come down?
We, we had $68,000.
You can address that.
Uh, Mr. Agnew, do you have a question about cleaning?
Yeah, and CPA funds.
That's been a consideration right along, since the murals cannot be moved. I did have a company come in to look at that situation, and they came up with a cleaning figure of $68,000. To do that would simply put another step into the process, because you can clean them, and they'll still be there, and they'll still be locked away in the auditorium, and they still will not be seen. So it makes sense to clean them if you had a public auditorium where citizens of Fall River could go in regularly and students could use the auditorium. That is not the case, so if we come to the conclusion that we have a conundrum where an extraordinary collection of artwork is available in the city of Fall River that is never seen, and that is not open to the public, and it is, in fact, the last piece of the legacy that Derfie High School has left for us. Volunteers from the Alumni Association have spent decades on the bells and the chimes. So that's been a legacy that we've been able to move to the new high school. The planetarium is here, the clock is here, and the man murals remain locked away. I can tell you that if you go through the history of all this, predecessors, Superintendent of Schools Hector Balleil was the driving force in 1935 to get the WPA to come in to the Rock Street Derfie and decorate the walls. That's what his idea was, decorate these walls. An unemployed artist at the time, Mr. Man Mural, who lived on Hood Street, married to, into the Cook family, trained in Boston and studied extensively, was given the contract, $95 a month for the WPA. So if he worked approximately 50 hours a week every month, he probably averaged about 40 cents per hour. The end result was a collection that is extraordinary, that is the largest collection of WPA artwork in the United States, and I will repeat that. I didn't make that up, it was done, that statement was made at the dedication in 1940. The WPA murals that we have in the auditorium on Rock Street are the largest contiguous collection of WP artwork in the United States. Contiguous because it is contiguous around the auditorium. Most of your artwork that you'll see in the WPA are located in separate places, like post offices, banks, and so forth, but we have something that tells a story, and it is, um, locked away, as I say, and nobody gets to see it. So yes, we consider cleaning. Cleaning would add a valuable step if we were open to the public, and we're not open to the public. And I, and, and considering other companies that we looked at, the digital, high-resolution digital photography is able to take that image of the mural and replicate it with color and color management, so that any dirt and dust that's been accumulated in the last 80 years will not be shown in the digital reproduction. So I, I've suggested to Mr. Pacheco that we go for a sample first, that we go for a sample, so that we can come back to assure you that what we're getting as a product is the product that you want, rather than come in and ask for a complete, um, reproduction of the auditorium. It's 26,000 square feet. I mean, we've been managing that and measuring that for the last couple of years, so it's, it's difficult to suggest this, because I, I imagine that a few of you on the panel, on the committee, have not been in the auditorium. Mr. Bailey, maybe? Have you been in there?
No.
No. I mean, no, you're, you're a lot younger than the students that I represent, who were students at Derfie before 1978. So there's a number of you, I'm sure, that have not been in there. We're telling you to vote for something, or asking you to vote for something that you haven't seen. And we'll be glad, Mr. Pacheco and I will be glad to get you in there, so that you can see what, um...
I, I'm not asking, I wasn't asking for like the value of it, so I appreciate you explaining that, because the public should know what we're talking about, but my question was along the lines of...
Could you use a microphone, please?
My question wasn't about the value of what's there. My question was related to the CPA funds and whether they were going to preserve this.
Correct.
So I'm reading the letter from Mr. Williams, and it says, "If these murals are to be preserved and enjoyed by future generations, this would best be accomplished by cleaning them where they are. Trying to remove and relocate them could cause significant damage." So I'm talking about two separate things. If we go through with this $7,500 expense for one set, what I was asking is, has the CPA, which is community preservation of those items, have they denied a request to clean them?
No, they did not deny the request for cleaning. I, when I went back to the CPA, the CPA funded me for the assessment. That assessment was done by a qualified company, Peter Williams, in Boston. He is the main source of WPA murals in the state of Massachusetts. He's done a number of collections. So he did the assessment, and the CPA funded that. I did not go back to the CPA for cleaning, because of the determination that that cleaning would only add $68,000 to the price, and we still would not have a product. The end result was, the CPA would not fund high-resolution duplication, because that was, in their definition, in the state of Massachusetts CPA definition, high-resolution replication is not restoration. It's restoration if you go to the wall and preserve what's on the wall. It's replication if you do these copies and create a new product. So the CPA funding did not cover that.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand that. I'm going to vote for the 7,500, I think it's a valuable project, but I would respectfully ask you that if you, everything you said is true, you want to preserve them, I would go back to the CPA board and ask them, you think you said it was $68,000?
That's possible.
To clean them?
That's possible.
I would respectfully say, go, I would go back to them, because it sounds like a valuable, that's why we pay those, that fee, is to preserve things. So I'm going to vote for this, but I'm, I was only asking because I think, reading this letter, it was begging the question, why haven't we preserved them? And we would preserve them with CPA funds, so you can do what you would like with it, I'm just giving you my opinion that I think it's a valuable project to go back to them.
Well, there are other, there are other sources. If, if the CPA is mandated by the state not to consider replication, then, then that's, that's their guideline. There are other sources, and one of the key sources that I have not investigated yet would be the General Services Administration. The GSA actually is the inheritor of the WPA. I need to look at the GSA and their res, their representative in Boston to find out if the General Services Administration would be interested in this project.
Yeah, no, I, I, you have my support. You don't have to sell me on it, I just wanted to pass my, my thoughts on after reading the document, so I'm going to support it, and I appreciate your time.
There are other sources, there are, there are, uh, National Institute of Humanities.
So I think, um, I think what, the reason that, but this is, this is, Kevin raises a good point, I know that the CPA won't cover the cleaning, not that they won't, but we thought it was impractical, because as Joyce is saying, even if they invest all this money, nobody's going to see it. So it's like, I don't know, wearing a pretty dress and staying home. Nobody's seeing it, it really doesn't matter. So why would we spend $68,000 if we can't open up the area to allow people to come in, and right now, we can't? The problem is, um, the building in itself, which to fix would be a great cost. So in this time, this has been sitting for 10 years, I think you've been working on this with the school department, Joyce, has it been 10 years?
Uh, well, I, I started this project when I retired, um...
Okay. But my point is, it's been a real long time. And, and we have, if we have a building that's...
It's been a long time, but you've got to count the fact that we've had three years lost.
Absolutely.
Because of the pandemic.
Sure.
And, and I understand it's a long process.
Yeah.
But, um, the chimes and the, the bells were a long process.
Sure.
I mean, they encountered a number of obstacles, including having, having to actually manufacture a bell. So I would like to put myself in the same category as those alumni that have dedicated time and energy to the history of Derfie High School.
Sure. So my question, Joyce, would be, I understand you didn't think it was feasible to clean it, because we can't really view it, but if, as Ken, Mr. Pacheco just said, um, if we are going to digitally photograph it and digitally enhance it, it may have to be cleaned before that process. And my guess is, it's going to have to be cleaned, because there was another report that I read, where they were talking, that the, the report of cleaning it was saying it's, it's very dirty. So I'm pretty sure if we're going to photograph it, we're going to want to clean it first. That'd be my guess. Um, so that is going to be a cost, so do you think that's something the CPA would help, would help do? If we said, yeah, clean it, so we can restore it nice and pretty in here, and then once it's nice and pretty, we also, if we can fix that building, access it, um, in time, but we could also photograph it? I don't, do you understand what I'm saying? Do you think they would help us by cleaning the wall?
You mean, strictly of photograph?
No, I'm saying, the CPA, you're saying, they would fund the cleaning, because they'll, they'll fund the restoration, but it has to remain there, they're not going to fund the photography. So what I'm asking is, if we do say, approach the CPA and say, hey, how much can you give us to clean this? We do want to try to make it accessible, because once the building is in good shape, we can, and I think that's something everyone wants to do, um, but also, we don't know how long that's going to take, and if we don't, sort of, in my opinion, if we don't digitally capture this now, then we run the risk of damaging the mural that's up there if we continue to wait and there's any kind of water damage, anything, you know, we're, we're ruining art, we're ruining history if we keep it there. So I agree, I'm voting for this, I want to be able to capture it digitally, you can move it around, you can put it up in Derfie, I think it's a wonderful idea, but when Kevin mentioned CPA funds for cleaning it, is there a way we can, like, would they be willing to, if we have to clean the wall before we pay to photograph it, would they be willing to come in and help with that? I guess is my question.
Yeah, that's it.
So, um, I think that, obviously, the $68,000 price tag was for all of them.
Uh huh.
So I think that if this particular piece that we choose to be digitized, if that one piece needs, um, that attention, I would come back and say we need $2,000 to do this one piece, or $3,000 to do this one piece. But according to one of the people who gave us a number to do this work, they're saying that the digitization is not going to need to be cleaned first.
Okay.
So we'll see, we'll see if that's the case, when it happens, exactly. I think the, the other piece with the CPC, um, with the community preservation money is that part of the application states that, um, how does the public gain?
And we don't have that answer yet.
What does the community get out of this? And because the building is not a building that people can walk into and see, even if we had hours, visitation hours, that room in particular is not ready for prime time, so to speak. So I think that we would need to, if we're going to CPA, to, to use funds, I think we would need to be sure that we could make that publicly accessible, and I think that, that they would be gladly, um, you know, fund it for us. I think they would.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Hart?
That statement is, Mr. Pacheco, when he was chairman of the CPC, so I've seen him in a number of iterations, and I publicly want to tell you that he's, um, worked diligently to get the restoration of the auditorium in terms of replacing the roof, so that the murals are not subject to water damage. So we're doing a good job, we're getting a heads up on this, uh, we were protecting them, and I'm just hopeful that we can open them up in some way for the rest of the city of Fall River to see them. This is why we're suggesting a purchase order for a sample, uh, product for the school committee to determine whether or not this should move forward.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Joyce, I'm glad you're here tonight, I'm glad this is finally coming to fruition for you, uh, and for us. Um, I've worked on this with you for quite some time, um, and I, I have seen the murals, and they are breathtaking, and they're definitely a treasure of this city.
There you go.
So I think this is...
So, Mr. Bailey, we're ready, we're ready for your tour. Who else now, who else hasn't seen them? Ms. Roderick's? Have you, you haven't seen them?
I'm here for it.
Nope, they are, they...
All right, I got, I'm going to raise, how many hands? Oh, oh my gosh!
Yeah.
All right, we're going to get a side-out shoot here, and, um...
Nope, they are, I raised my hand that I've seen them, so, um, but Joyce, what I'm saying is...
Have to get a field trip going.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll get a travel request done tonight for it.
All right, I, I agree. I, I don't expect, I mean, we've had turnover since, um, Ms. Pereira has noted that this has been going on for a while. We've had a lot of new elections, we've had a couple of mayors, so things are moving on, but, um, the dedication that we have is still here, and it's still Derfie High School, so I thank you for attention.
And thank you very much, Joyce. Have a good night, thank you.
Can I get a motion in a second?
There is a motion.
There is a motion in a second?
There is in a second.
Okay, Deb, please, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavia?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 12.2 is an interview with Dr. Amy Bronhardt, applicant for the position of assistant... applicant for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services and Strategic Integration for the Fall River Public Schools. Dr. Bronhardt is the superintendent of schools recommended candidate for the appointment to the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services and Strategic Integration. Madam Superintendent.
So obviously, you know that this has been a long process. We've actually started this process. We, the position has stayed vacant for a while as we were searching for the right candidate. We've had multiple interviews with multiple groups at different times. And this last group that we interviewed, Dr. Bronhardt, was brought forth to me along with another candidate. Certainly, Dr. Bronhardt is dedicated to Fall River Public Schools, has a history in Fall River, has, you know, committed herself to bettering our community and, you know, has successfully done turnaround work at Henry Lord in addition to serving at Durfee and Talbot. So I, without reservation, bring forth Dr. Bronhardt for her interview and hoping after that, you will recommend her. I will recommend her.
Dynamite. Dr. Bronhardt, you want to come down to the podium, please? Do you want to make an opening statement? Or I just want to take questions?
Oh, no, I'll, I'll open up with a statement, thanks. When given the chance to control the crowd, a principal always takes that opportunity. I feel blessed to come after you, Joyce, because I think Fall River pride is certainly what I hope separates me as a candidate. So greetings, Mayor Coogan, school committee, Superintendent Potts. Fall River Public Schools. If you know anything about me, my emotions are my biggest strength. So please, just give me a quick second. I stand before you as candidate for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration of the Fall River Public Schools. I'm honored, humbled, and excited to be with you tonight. As a product of Fall River Public Schools, myself, I graduated from Durfee High School in 1998 and began working with our city's youth almost immediately in 1999 thereafter, when I led one of the Fall River Street Crew's Youth Summer Jobs Program down on Deval Street, cleaning the crew with my school bus and our brooms and our 12-student crew. And Mark Jendro was actually my co-pilot at the time, who's now Vice President of Bay Coast Bank, another Durfee grad and colleague of mine. I had that picture sitting in my office, because I distinctly remember that experience, because it lit a fire in me 24 years ago, to lead and give back through our city's youth in the power of public education. At a young age, it was instilled in me that the power of education was what any one individual needed to rise above. Since returning home to Fall River from Bridgewater State College in 2002, I earned my bachelor's degree at Bridgewater State. I knew that continuing my work in Fall River was where I saw myself long-term. I grew up in the Flint. I moved to the South End of Fall River, and I have been civically engaged and an active member in our community throughout the years. I was elected to the Fall River School Committee in 2004 at the age of 26. I went on to get my master's in guidance counseling at Cambridge College in 2007. And in 2008, I began working at Durfee High School as a guidance counselor, star-eyed and ready to take on the world. In 2008, I sought my first leadership role in the Fall River Public Schools as the Director of Guidance. And it was then that I began my fierce advocacy for students post-high school to have a plan for college and career. I believed firmly that we needed to ensure our students had a plan to enter the real world after high school. In 2013, I obtained my doctorate degree in, from Northeastern University, where I was able to study and research the influences that drive our students and families in making their decision for high school and beyond. You see, for me, it's always been about creating access and opportunities for our students and families. The Fall River Public Schools is a business. We are in the business of educating students, and we cannot do it alone. I've had the privilege of serving as vice principal at Talbot Middle School and Durfee High School, and both were instrumental in building my foundational leadership skills. I must say that the last six years of being the proud principal at Henry Lord truly changed my life. We've grown our school community from the grassroots up without any excuses. I've had the privilege of leading some of the strongest teams of teachers, administrators, support staff, families, nutrition workers, custodians alike, all in support of developing our positive school culture and a climate and culture that was focused on student achievement. I've been able to rely on the collaboration with all of the district departments. I could never have done this work at Lord in the last six years by myself, whether that was transportation, the couriers, technology, maintenance, countless community partners who enhanced the work to support a winning mentality and a winning team down at Henry Lord. We've grown from the fourth percentile to the 12th in the last six years, and we grew 2% coming out of COVID. That was not by accident. That was a team effort that focused on results and put kids' learning at the forefront of all of the work that we did. I do not stray away from difficult conversations, because I believe it's what helps make people best versions of themselves to show up every day for our kids and families. Simultaneously, I've been serving as a trustee for the Durfee Alumni Association ever since I stepped aside six years ago, always keeping connected to the highest and smartest and brightest and strongest and talented Durfee High School students looking to support through the scholarship organization. I have also been serving on the Board of the YMCA for the last seven years and the Board of STAR for the last eight months. And so I stand before you today, yes, as a candidate for Assistant Superintendent, but I think about my reasons why and why I'm here today. I firmly believe in the team that we are building here in Fall River. As I look at the work I'm doing in the South End with my team, I also firmly believe that we are ready and we are able to sustain the work that we are doing. And as I look across the network of my principal leadership cohort, I firmly believe in all the principals who I work with day in and day out. And I will tell you this, the South End needs are very different than the North End needs and everything in between. So one size will never fit all. But collectively and together, I do believe that Fall River is poised for greatness. We've also been adding a number of SEL positions to our budgets in the last couple of years. And I am a firm believer of systems leadership. I believe we need to support our principals with establishing systems of accountability to be able to hold everybody accountable to high expectations, all in support of student achievement. And when we think about partnering with our community, we need to open up the doors of all of our schools to bring in our community partners, so that as families need the resources, they know that they can count on the schools to be the receivers and supports of delivering those resources. I believe in family engagement, and that has to go beyond, as Ms. Roderick's has said before, that has to go beyond just parent-teacher conferences. We can't rely on single, isolated situations to be the measuring stick of family engagement. Because there's one thing I've also learned, learned in my whole entire career. I've never met one family member who did not want the best for their children. They may have different approaches to achieving that for their kids, but that is not for us to judge. That's for us to support and meet them in achieving those goals for their kids. Because our kids deserve nothing but the best. And with that, I know that I can bring the best to support the best, which is the Fall River Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Bronhardt. Ms. LaRavi?
Hi, Dr. Bronhardt.
Hi.
So I kind of was in your spot, a little emotional seven, seven weeks ago, so I get it. Have admired your whole career in the district. And I just have one question. I know, obviously, you're not in the position, right? So what do you envision your days to look like in this position? I typically see you as a boots-on-the-ground, visual person, not behind a keyboard, not in an office all day. Where do you see yourself in this position on a, on a daily basis? Not specific, but I think where I'm leaning is, will you be in schools?
So I think there's the physical presence of being present, and then there's the emotional presence of being present. When we think about the, the other assistant superintendents who I have the potential opportunity to join and the pleasure of joining, there are teams underneath those folks. Similarly, I look at my role as partnering with principals directly, because within the work of SEL are the folks boots-on-the-ground. When we talk about climate and culture, you need to live it and experience it in order to help support it and redefine it. In order to extend it, we need to know what's working in buildings, and then we can build upon it. Every school is different, so partnering boots-on-the-ground with principals, you know, every day, there's an arrival at a different building. And I firmly see myself built in the community and, and present in buildings and supporting principals in ways that we maybe haven't had a presence in the past. So I, you know, I have my own visions for the work, but I also know that I need to be part of the process and build partnerships that extend beyond what my current relationships are with principals, right? Every principal runs their building similarly, and I think it's important to know where your entry point is and how you can help extend the work that is already going on. But certainly, being present in the work is, is where I envision it has to be, particularly when we're talking about the social-emotional supports for schools and community supports and leveraging those connections and helping find resources as the needs arise across our community.
I appreciate that. Thank you for now. I yield.
Any further questions, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I don't have any questions for Amy, but just a comment that, I mean, I've known Amy for a long time. She's a staple in the community. Her family's a staple in the community. They're a bunch, they're a class act. I can't think of anybody that's better for this position than you. You've been in the district for a long time. You know the district, you know the city. And I can't be happier for you, for your family as well. So I'm, this is a big yes for me. So thank you. I yield.
Any further questions? Ms. Roderick?
Hi, hi, sir. We're going way back. So I'm going to ask you the same questions that I had asked of Lori when Lori was up here, because we know that my, my focus has always been on inclusion work. And we don't do a great job of inclusion work in this district. And I think that's no secret to anybody, right? We've talked about this. So what's your understanding of the DEI work that's embedded in this role? And how would you approach that? What do you see as the priorities for inclusion work here?
I think it also comes with connecting with families to get a better sense on what do families perceive the inclusion work to look like? And what become our tiers of inclusion work? You know, having worked at Henry Lord for the last six years and the home of 12 substantially separate severe autism classrooms, I understand how a vision can get derailed very quickly if certain other factors are not in place across our school communities. So when I think about creating safe communities for all kids, we have to start there. And then thinking about where do both inclusion and reverse inclusion have a place in our schools? And how do we leverage community resources to help support in that work? When I think about some of the DEI, more specifically around culture and race, we've also taken on some of that work at Henry Lord to really think deep around our own... Give me one second. I'm drawing, just draw a blank on the word.
Story of my life.
Thinking about our own identities, right? And thinking about our own privileges that have been granted to us. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done. I also think if we had all the answers in-house, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So I think about leveraging the resources across the Department of Education, thinking about where are there districts that are doing and supporting our special populations with inclusion? And what does that look like? So we can replicate and then extend upon that. I think there's one thing about my leadership is that I have never, ever once been the smartest person at the table. But I have often been the most collaborative person at the table. So recognizing, I don't have necessarily all of the answers for this work, but opening up our doors to bring in experts and to show us where this work is being done effectively and how can Fall River quickly get on board to replicate and then expand, expand the work here in our district. I do think we have pockets of great work going on across the district. It may not be as widespread as we all wish, but I don't believe that we're starting at ground zero. I do believe that there are pockets of strong efforts across the district, and we need to continue to learn from our peers and then build programs and pipelines that support that work.
Well, I think that's why I asked the question, because I look at inclusion as less of, how are we getting kids into sort of mainstream classrooms? And gen ed, like, goes way beyond that. We have to live and breathe inclusion if we're really going to do it well. So yeah, there might be pockets, and, and I know there are, I can think of quite a few, actually, where this work gets done well. But then, at this level, how do you bring that to the greater community? And I don't expect you to have an answer for that right now. But I do, I would like to know, like, as we move forward, what is your plan for bringing that as an entire climate for this district? Because we have 11,000 students, and we don't do it well across the board, right? That's a given. And so what can we do to sort of fix that, right? And, and inclusion includes not just race and not just culture and ethnicity, but it's looking at ability, it's looking at identity, it's looking at all of those pieces, because they all factor in, to how our kids, how our families perceive the work that we're doing.
And how they connect with schools, to look at schools as a catalyst in this work with them, right? And not against them.
As their home base. So I could go back and forth about this, not in a bad way, but I can have the conversation about inclusion all day long. I think anyone at this table knows that I'll do that. So I'll be quiet about that for a second. My other question is, so in terms of tiered supports, right? You mentioned that when you were, when you were giving your statement, and then it's in your resume as well. So when you're thinking about tiered supports, how do you envision using tier-one supports to try to mitigate or try to alleviate some of the issues that go along with some of our tier-two to tier-three needs?
I think it's about being proactive, to recognize what, where different schools are at in regard to building climate and culture. You know, I, I think about tier-one, and, and a lot of the tier-one outcomes are generated not just by a program or not just by, you know, one particular aspect of the tier-one supports, but quite frankly, like a buffet of it all happening day in and day out, where we are celebrating students, we are consistent around our expectations for students. Students know what it means, for instance, at Henry Lord, to be a bulldog, to be safe, responsible, and respectful. There, I don't know whether or not there's been a laser-light focus across the district in the last couple of years. We've had inconsistent leadership around the SEL work specifically during some of what have been the most tumultuous years that our kids have endured. And so I firmly believe we need to come together to recognize, especially coming out of this year, what is working? Because this has been the more traditional year than we've had in the last three. So meeting with principals to identify, now that we are all in more of our post-COVID normal, what is working, what is successful, what is not working, and how do we continue to move forward? You know, at Henry Lord particularly, we took part in the SEL Academy through the state, the MTSS SEL Academy. So I have experience with putting into place tier-one, tier-two, and then tier-three supports. And even when we think about tier-two and tier-three supports, it may or may not be universal across all of our schools because of how different the needs are at all of our buildings. But I do believe that's also why we need to have a buffet of offerings at every tier, so that as counselors and as support staff are working with students, families alike, that we, we have a buffet to pick from as we recognize what the differing needs are of kids and families. You know, and I also look at that as like this ebb and flow, because what our families need now, they may not need in September and October. So we need to be sure that families understand they can work with schools and that the schools are working with families to meet the needs of kids as their needs change from needing tier-two and tier-three supports. Because if a child needs tier-two supports in the fall, that does not necessarily mean that they'll need those supports come the spring. So when I think about the ebb and flow, it's really about knowing your kids, knowing your community, and having the trust within the families that as you are recommending interventions for their students, the families are working alongside of us in, in, in true support of wraparound services for their student. And we take each student individually to be able to support the needs of everybody at the end of every day.
But in this role, you wouldn't personally be able to do that with all of the students. So I guess my question is more of, how would you coach your staff into being able to do that consistently across the board?
So I think that's working with principals. Because in this position, I don't, but this position doesn't specifically have staff underneath you other than just a few.
Right, there's a few. And so that's, how would you get that information out there to them?
It would be in partnering with principals and the support staff within each of the buildings. buildings, because every building has a network of support staff that drive the SEL work in their building. And so leveraging those teams, being part of those teams and partnering with principals to be part of those teams, I think will be instrumental in the work, because you can't just do it from afar in this, in this work.
So I don't ask any of these questions to give you a hard time. We know that this is the work that like I live and breathe. And so when I ask those questions, it goes back to how can we make our kids, how can we make our families healthier, stronger? So that way, as a community, we are healthier and stronger. So I just want you to know that I'm not asking those questions to be difficult. I'm asking because...
You can take it as difficult at all. This is the, this is the work.
This is the world that I live in. So those are my questions for now. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Bailey?
Amy? So I think my biggest question is just around, if appointed to this position, how do we make sure we support Lord? With you being there for so long and the work that you've been doing, I know the work that you've been doing, I do a lot of work in the community, we know each other personally. So I think the biggest thing is how, if you were appointed to this position, how do we make sure we support Lord and we don't have any, you know, fall off in terms of some of the work you've been doing around this side?
I think the biggest testament to any leader is when they walk away, the work continues. I already experienced that back at the beginning of the pandemic, when we went on four snow days and we were all told, stop, don't do anything, don't communicate, we don't know where this pandemic is going. And behind the scenes, my team already had Zoom meetings up and going and instruction was launching within three days after. Because when the leader was silent, the team marched into battle and went after, went after whatever it was. And I remember calling at the time my colleague, I think Assistant Superintendent Ponce at the time, like losing my mind because my team charged into battle without me. And very quickly I realized, well, isn't that what it's all about? That when the leader's absent, the team continues forward? Because you see, I might be leading the charge at Lord, but I need you to understand that is by far one of the most fiercely rooted team of professionals I have ever come across in my career. Because if it wasn't, I can promise you this, I would not be standing here in front of you today. That is like my first born child, Lord, and the work that we have done there, I can promise you. It took me six months to even come to terms with the fact that I was ready to step away and that the baby would still swim. So I am very, very confident that the team that is there will take Lord into the next chapter. And quite honestly, our goal will be to chase the North End schools, to keep up with the North End schools next. That's the charge of the next principal, is to chase the North End schools. Because if you don't know, I'm also very competitive. And winning and achieving is really, really important to me. Because again, when we think about what does student achievement mean, it really means my bulldogs are reading, they're writing, they're critically thinking, they're socially more in control of themselves to become the scholars of Fall River's future. So I feel very confident in the team at Lord. I will, my, you know, the plan will be, assuming that I move forward as the committee's choice, that I would stay till the end of June and take care of all of the leadership work and hiring work to make sure that the team is as intact as it possibly can be upon my stepping aside. But certainly, certainly, we don't go backwards in the South End, we go forward, just in case you didn't know.
Well done, Bob. Mr. Aguirre?
So I would normally ask, I always ask, I asked Mrs. Ponce this when she became superintendent, why you and why now? But I do have to say you answered pretty much those questions from my colleagues. So I just have a few, you know, thoughts and comments on, on the position. So when we look at this position, I think it makes sense in that the departments that are gonna fall under you are many. It's not just one thing. And as I'm looking at this, I would just like you to weigh in on some of them. So one of the things is guidance counselors you'd oversee, you'd oversee school adjustment counselors, you'd oversee attendance officers, the MTSS RTI process, the alternative education school, and strategic partnerships. Can you just hit on a couple of those of where your experience is and why you think you can hit the ground running with some of those departments?
So even when we think about guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, I think it's really important that we recognize that all of those positions work and function within the school communities. So it's really about building routine, building relationships that extend to really targeted short-term goal outcomes for the counselors, right? So working with the director of guidance, working with the principals who oversee these folks day in and day out, what become our objectives and what become the measuring sticks for success? When I think about student attendance right off the bat, we have to do better. There is no way that we can evaluate any other thing that we're doing if our kids are not in school. So as an example, this past year, Henry Lord was at 31% chronic in January, my team came together, my SEL team in the building came together, we created a short-term action plan, Henry Lord is at 19.6% chronic today. Because when we set short-term goals, everybody knows their role in achieving that goal, and we monitor, what gets monitored gets done. So when I think about those departments particularly, my first questioning would be, how are we monitoring and what are the goals of those departments? And how are we then supporting folks in achieving those goals? You know, I'm really a big, one of my biggest strengths, I believe, is that I know how to recognize the strengths in others and then build those others up. So when I think about all of the folks that are in those departments that you spoke of, Mr. Aguirre, it's not any one person, but it's a collection of a lot of folks who bring a lot of talents to the work. And so where do we need to even professionally develop some of our folks? Because we all have to be lifelong learners as the landscape of education constantly changes to keep up with our kids. So I envision the work to be a lot of team building, to put systems in place with principals at the building level, and then monitoring those systems and putting the right supports in place as needed. When I think about family engagement and community partnerships, I don't know how widespread the work is, because the only work I truly know is the work I've been doing at Lord. But when I think about how successful we have been to be able to provide families resources, schools resources to attend to some of the SEL needs and concerns that are getting in the way of teaching and learning, I believe that we do have a community that is ready to respond and ready to help support. So as much as I know there's a wide range of departments, for me, a lot of it comes down to building relationships with individuals, recognizing what their love language is, because when people feel heard, when people feel supported, what my experience has been is they will work hard and they will move mountains when they feel heard and supported. And I can tell you similarly to myself, you know, I've had Superintendent Ponce by my side truthfully from, I mean, it really goes back to the Innovation School, if folks really want to know how far back it goes, right? Where we were fighting for change, fighting for different opportunities for our kids. But knowing I've always had a fearless leader behind me, knowing that I had a leader that I could be vulnerable with when things weren't going right. Because let's be honest, when things are great, everybody's on your side. But when things get muddy, when you need support, that's when folks become judgmental or decide to turn and go in a different direction. So I think it's about building communities, building teams, having folks feel heard, and then building upon it from there. And I do believe that's also what's been lacking in this role for a number of years. You know, this year, the position has not been filled, but if we're honest with ourselves, last year, there were limitations to the work that was able to be done for a range of different reasons. So it's been a good couple of years that our support staff have not had guidance and leadership of everybody rowing in the same direction. So I believe getting everybody on board to have a clear vision of how they connect to the SEL priority, and then how do we move people forward to be able to set short-term goals to go after at school by school and then network by network.
Thank you. So when I look at your resume, I know, and I know you personally, that you've worked at all different levels. I like that, that you've had experience in the elementary, the high school, the middle school, so you, you have a wide range of experience there. And when I sat on the original interviews for this position, one of the things we kept wondering is, are you gonna be all in to the, to the candidates? We had candidates from all over the state, and we had to tell them, and some people would say, oh, I'm gonna move in, I'm gonna, I'll be around, you'll see me in the, you know, and all this stuff. And there's no substitute for somebody that's here already. And, you know, when I look at it, I say, I wonder if you're gonna be all in. And then I realize that you're gonna be all in, because you have been all in. So you've been all in with the Henry Lord, all the other positions. So, you know, I have no problem supporting you as a candidate, but one of the things I think that you said tonight is very on point, is that you never considered yourself the smartest person in the room. And when I look at the leadership team in the central office, I mentioned this at the last meeting, that I think we have a lot of new people, young people like yourself that are just coming into the first time. So I think we all have to take a good, hard look at and say, do we need a more experienced person at some point in a deputy's role to help you grow and Mrs. Ponce grow and Mrs. Obenchain grow? So when you said that, that first thing was in my head was, if we get all these leaders together, and I think you're gonna be a strong member of Mrs. Ponce's team, one of the things that I still think is lacking is that long-term person that has experience in central office. So I would just ask you to consider that same quote when you sit down with the leadership team and say, what do we need as a group to take this district to the next level? I'm confident that you can do the job and you certainly have my support. With that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further for Ms. Perera?
I don't have any questions, but since I'm the only one that hasn't spoken, I think you handle yourself wonderfully up there with questions. I think your leadership style's proven, your track record is proven, your love of Fall River and your dedication to the students of our district is proven. I'm very happy and very excited for you, and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
I guess I didn't speak either, but I know the Brownhard family probably better than anybody on this stage. I went to school with Jack. He was a very, very good student, straight A's most of the time. No, but I've known you forever, Amy, I worked with you, I have total confidence, I have total confidence in the team that the superintendent's assembling to turn the school around, turn the schools around, I'm sorry, but I believe we're headed in the right direction, and I think you're gonna be a key piece, and I support you 100%.
Thank you.
With that, any further discussions? Moving to 12.2, I'm looking for a motion and a second on the vote to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on Ms. Brownhard? Hearing none, Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
12.4 is an update and discussion on the fiscal year 24 budget as presented by Superintendent Ponce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we all know, we are in the throes of preparing our budget for fiscal year 24. So following the presentation and discussion of the budget over the two previous meetings of this committee, I want to take this opportunity to review the process to date and outline next steps. Also take the opportunity to share some reflections on the process to date and what I, what I hope are shared expectations for moving forward. On March 20th, 2023, CFO Almeida and myself presented publicly the proposed draft budget for FY24. All of you, all the committee members received binders detailing the proposal and were asked to review and offer feedback at the budget hearings that were to follow. The draft budget was also posted on our website the following day, which was based on feedback from last year. Important to note is that per this committee's request, the hearing process was modified this year. Instead of having hearings where each individual principal and department leader presented requests on behalf of their school or department, the format was changed to prepare and share the supporting documents for the committee's review, and then we would have each department or school leader available for questions from the committee, if there were any. The first budget hearing occurred on Wednesday, March 29th. All principals, with the exception of Dr. Brownhard, were available for questions and clarification of their requests. Additionally, at that hearing, the music, art, PE, health, and nursing departments were reviewed, their budgets were also reviewed. On Monday, April 4th, our second budget hearing was held in addition to the Henry Lord Community School budget. The remaining department budgets were reviewed and department heads were once again available to answer any questions from the committee. The third hearing was tentatively scheduled for Thursday, April 6th, but that was canceled as the budget review process was completed on Monday, April 4th. As we moved forward in this process, there are three additional meetings that are going to happen. Tomorrow, April 11th, there is a joint meeting of the school, school committee and city council, where we will share our draft budget with the members of the city council. On Monday, April 24th, there's a scheduled school committee meeting where the school committee will vote to officially release the budget to the public. Once that's completed, in addition to the budget being posted electronically, hard copies will be available for members of the public to review. And finally, on Monday, May 15th, 2023, there will be a school committee meeting so that this committee can take a vote to approve the budget and send it to the city council. All that, a lot of work happening within a few months. I do have some points to clarify. On Thursday, April 4th, the second of the two budget hearings was held. As planned, department leaders were present and available to answer any questions. During the transportation discussion, much was said about our proposed proposal to use $1.5 million in circuit breaker funds to offset transportation costs for out-of-district students. Concerns were raised that the school administration was underhanded in attempting to slide this into the school, into the budget. It was also suggested that we were using these funds without permission from the school committee and that we had not notified the school committee prior to proposing this. In reference to these concerns, I offer the following. The law does allow the circuit breaker funds to be used for transportation and out-of-district students. Again, I reiterate that this was our proposal to support the escalating transportation costs, which are projected to be upwards of $12 million. This was a proposal, this is a draft budget. Contrary to what was suggested, there was absolutely no underhanded plan to slide anything by this committee. We have been transparent in our process and we will continue to do so. That is not my leadership style. This is our proposal. No one asked us to put anything in the proposed budget. Mr. Almeida and I were talking about how we could try to lessen the burden on the city, given that the budget for transportation was going to be above $12 million. This committee has the authority to agree or to disagree with our proposal and is ultimately the body that will vote to approve or reject our proposed budget. The budget process is still ongoing, as I just reported. Nothing has been approved, I want to make that clear, because that was out there. Nothing has been approved, no money has been received as this is the budget for next year, and no money has been transferred. As I reflect on what went on Monday, and I, I'm a reflective person, it's something that bothered me because it hits at my core, I will concede that an error was made in terms of the communication around our proposed use of the circuit breaker funds. While we were following the agreed-upon of plan of presenting and sharing the proposed budget and ensuring school and department leaders were present and available to answer any questions, I accept that this element of the proposed budget warranted highlighting in advance of the, of the meeting discussion. Moving forward, if we are proposing a change that is out of the ordinary, I will provide the committee with written rationale as we have done with other school and departmental requests. That's on me. As we continue these budget discussions and as we continue to collaborate to put forth a budget that is centered on moving our schools and our district forward, I ask that we all do so with professionalism and the respect that each of us deserves. I truly believe that the intentions of this committee are rooted in serving our students, staff, and families. And it is important that each member of this committee approaches our shared work believing that my intentions and the intentions of my team are also rooted in the same. How we go about achieving our intentions may be different, but I have no doubt that we can get there respectfully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Perera? I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre. Mr. Aguirre?
No, I was just, he was looking at me and I was pointing.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand, sorry. Yeah, so I started this as a, as a, an agenda item, but we received nothing at all prior to tonight about what that was gonna be in the package. So I wasn't sure what, what this was gonna be, because I always thought that when we put something on an agenda, we have some backup documents with it, but that doesn't always happen here. So just speaking of the issue on the transportation and the line items and stuff, so, Mrs. Ponce, are you saying that, how did the process work for you to get the $1.5 million into the budget document? When did that happen? Who was in the room? Who made the decision? And how did it get into the final draft?
That was Mr. Almeida and myself. We were looking at the proposed costs and the projected cost for transportation is 12.8. We talked about how we could support, that's a lot of money. We know that's a lot of money. We know we can't, that's not net school spending eligible. We talked about what is, is there anything that's net school spending eligible? Or is there anything that we are allowed to pay for? And that's when we had that discussion, Mr. Almeida and I, no one, I can say that emphatically, Mr. Almeida and I, we had that discussion and we said that circuit breaker, that's what he told me, circuit breaker, if we transport students who are out-of-district students, that they, that is, we can use funds for that. And then that's when I said, how much does it cost for us to transport? What's the projected cost? About a million and a half. So that's why it was put in the proposal as one way to support that. That's all there was to it, there was... to support that. That's all there was to it. There was absolutely no intent to do anything illegal, anything, because it's eligible, but there was absolutely no intent to blindside anybody. In hindsight, yeah, you're right, because that's something we've never done before, so I should have given you all a heads up, but there was absolutely nothing else to that.
When was that?
I can't.
You highlighted the dates of when all of these things happened, so I'm just curious of when that discussion actually occurred.
Well, you got the budget on March 20th. That was already in the budget. That was in our preparation for budget discussions as we were all doing our, every single department and every school was creating their budgets.
So what I'm saying is, when we created that document, so it's obviously before March 20th because we received the budget on our desks at 5:00 on March 20th. So obviously it was before then that those numbers would have to get plugged into a spreadsheet or in some sort of document that's here.
Right.
Can you get us a date on when that actually went into the computer?
I mean, we can look at our notes.
I'm just curious to see how the process went. So one of the things, and you mentioned this, that we've never done it before.
Yep.
So I was very critical of the discussion, of the decision, and I'm going to continue to be critical of the discussion and the idea that we can put that in there. And the reason being is because I've sat on this board for a long time and I know what it means to have a surplus of funds. I know what it means to have a circuit breaker. I know what that is. We spend the money, we get the money back. It goes into an account that should be used for the children. Everyone knows that. Now, all of a sudden, we have an issue of transportation. The mayor presents a home rule petition that says we're going to take $11 million out. You and I had a heated discussion, not between you and I, but I explained to you how mad I was at the mayor for presenting such a thing because it was going to take budget money out of the schools and you agreed with me. I've been in private meetings where you, Mr. Almeida, and other folks have said, we can't do this because it's going to happen all the time and we can't afford it. We can't allow this to happen. So my passion at the time is because I haven't relented on that. We had $3 million in an account and you're saying that in your wisdom, as the superintendent, that you're choosing to take $1.5 million out of that voluntarily and paying expense that we are not required to spend by law. And I have a problem with that because I'm not going to vote for a budget that takes $1.5 million out. How can you look at the educators in this room or in this district and say, well, we had the money, but we're going to move $1.5 million out? So I had a problem with it before and I have a problem with it still to this day.
And I respect that, Mr. Aguirre. That is a proposal. That is not, I don't have the authority to do that. You and this committee as a body, you're the ones who have the authority to either agree or disagree with what's proposed. That is going to the children, the out-of-district children. I get what you're saying. In the same vein, that night, and I, the whole home rule piece, I agree. We all, I think we can all agree that we weren't going to take that kind of money out of the budget and that was going to be a detrimental effect. If you're, if there's any doubt in your mind that I had a side discussion about what to do with that money, you can put that out of your head because I promise you that there was not a single discussion about how we could lessen that. I didn't talk to the city about what we're going to do. That is what we were proposing and how to do our fair share. At the beginning of the meeting on April 4th, you said we needed to do whatever we could to help the city when we were talking about the SROs and taking $700 or $800,000. And I agree, we have to look and explore any possibility that we have supported in one way or another, but there was absolutely no intention to deceive anyone. None.
Right. So when you look at the budget and the transportation, we're going to take two votes. They're not one in the same. So we take two votes. So the problem that I have is burying something like that in the transportation line. Is the budget for the schools is one thing. The transportation budget is a totally different thing. So in the budget, you very easily could have said, we're going to allot $12 million. And then at a separate discussion to talk about the transportation, say, how are we going to help to fund it or not? That didn't happen. It got buried in a document here. So whether that's yourself, your team, whoever's pushing and asking those questions, I would assume, should have said, what are we doing here? Is this really something that we want to do? And moving forward, are we going to do it every year? Because I think it's going to set up another structural deficit for the city if we just say we're going to give it this year. Because what are we going to do next year? And I would even one step further go, why haven't we done this every year? City's been paying this for a while. So if it's such a great idea now, why is it that we haven't done this every year? If I was on the city's side, I'd be saying, why, if you can do it now, why didn't you do it for the last X amount of years? So when we advocated, and I'm glad you brought up the point of me trying to help the city, I did advocate for that back in June and July, where I suggested that we reopen the agreement with the city in order to try to help. And lo and behold, it's April 10th and we don't even have an agreement yet. At that same time, I said, and you can go back to the record because you brought it up, I want to make sure I say this. I brought up at that time, a logical, long-term expense that we could take over for the city was the $330,000 in school crossing guards that the city pays. And that would be something that would happen year upon year upon year. So rather than get $1 million or whatever, you know, we want to give, I'd rather give you $350,000 every year going forward because that's a legitimate expense for us. But no, we didn't address that for over six or eight months because we still haven't addressed the end of the year cost agreement. Just at the last meeting, the mayor says, well, we're talking about adding pensions and this and that. It was six months ago when we did this. So I stand by my statement to say we should help the city, but I don't think it should be coming out of the circuit breaker funds. We should look at it long-term and say, if the crossing guards, if the pensions, as the mayor mentioned, or whatever that comes out to, that's more legitimate because we can maintain that. But I stand by my statements and feeling whether it was passionate or not. The bottom line is, is that we are taking money that is under the purview of this school committee without a discussion and vote of this committee. We plugged it into this budget. Nowhere did that happen before. And the transportation can be taken right out of this because it's going to be a separate vote because we could look at it in a different way, but we're talking about a million and a half dollars. And I asked at the last meeting, did we get an answer from Jay Sullivan? I'll ask that again. I asked, any backup? I didn't ask you. I asked the superintendent and her team. Because what I'm hearing is that the mayor called the state, went to the state, they said, well, this can't happen, that can't happen, but we can count that towards a turnback. And I asked specifically at the last meeting, can I get the data and the information from him on the turnbacks? When did it happen? Who knew? When? What is it? I haven't seen it yet. I don't know if any member of the committee's seen it, but we should get it because it's part of this discussion. A turnback, it's not a turnback. And if that's what he said to somebody in the school department, I'd like it to be in writing so we can know what they said and when. If it's a turnback to the city, it should have been turned back every year if it was a turnback. It's not a turnback. It's a vote of this committee to determine what we're going to do. And I'd also like the administration to say, I did make a statement that said, we can take that money and pay for the tuitions and the like out of that. I want an answer to that as well. Because what could we have done with that money different than just have it sitting there waiting for, hopefully not needing it, but to service the children and out-of-district placement comes in, having a little stabilization account? What's so wrong with that? But I still think we need those answers. Those are the type of things I want to see agenda items for with backup documents to talk about. Not this whatever, I know what it is. We've got a joint meeting coming up, Mrs. Ponce. You said we've got a meeting tomorrow in your budget listing you just said. What documents do we have to talk about tomorrow before the meeting? It's less than 24 hours away.
You have your budget folder, binder, Mr. Aguirre. That's what is going to be presented to the city council. We did this on March 20th. Tomorrow, Mr. Almeida and I are going to go to city council to a joint meeting and present the budget, right?
No.
That's what we did last year, too.
That was news to me.
It's an overview, right, Mr. Almeida?
Right.
Yeah, it's just an overview.
It's an open meeting, but.
It's an overview.
Right. So, Mrs. Ponce, all I'm saying is, you mentioned the joint meeting and I was writing down my notes on the timeline. So you, in the conversation of the budget and the documents that we were talking about, you mentioned the joint meeting. So my only question is, what are we going to talk about tomorrow at the joint meeting related to the budget? Because it's not the presentation to the city council for the budget. So what are we going to talk about? The agenda for the items for tomorrow night have nothing to do with the school budget. So what is it that we're going to talk about tomorrow night? I have received zero. Everybody here, no information, no documents, no letters, no spreadsheets, no nothing, no five-year projections as it says we're going to talk about. What are we going tomorrow for?
You will receive everything before we go. We went to the same meeting last year. We did an overview of the budget. Mr. Almeida and I did an overview of the budget. We talked about what our proposed budget was. That's what happened at that meeting.
Yeah, this isn't meant for you.
We will give you the documentation.
I have yours. I know what we have for the school budget. But when you look at the school budget in relation to the joint meeting and the city council and the administration, it's longer-term planning, it's five-year planning and the like. So when I talked about at the, the reason why I wouldn't go for taking that money was because we have done that kind of work already with Mr. Almeida presented. How are we going to pay for all these positions over the next five years and that? We've done that work, but this meeting is with the city's side and we've got no information from the city's side. And that's the part of the problem is we're going to walk into a meeting that we don't have any information. And I think that's a problem. That's all I'm saying. I do appreciate the work that's done on the budget and you know that I speak to you quite candidly between meetings and the like. So I have no problem with you as a superintendent. I'm not telling anyone that, you know, you're doing a terrible job. I got a call from the radio thinking we were going to vote to get rid of you or something. I said, what are you talking about? So I support you, Mrs. Ponce. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, we're doing the right thing, and I think we share in that mission. So I continue to pledge to work with you, work with your new leadership team. This isn't about you versus me or the committee. I want to work together and I just want to make sure that when I vote for a budget, I know it's for the right reason and all that. And I really think that the answers that you're going to give in the writing later on relative to how this went down, we'll be able to get there jointly to come to an agreement on what's happening. With that, I yield.
I would like to respond, but I really don't want to keep this going. Anybody got anything else? Ms. Rodrick's.
I just wanted to say thank you for highlighting the fact that it was not highlighted in the budget because that was one of the things that I pointed out, that I rely on the expertise of my colleagues to be able to point out the things that I can't point out. Again, I'm not the smartest person at the table either. So not having that highlighted, you know, did cause an issue for me because I wouldn't have noticed it. It wasn't something that I would have recognized. So I appreciate the fact that you pointed that out and I just wanted to say that publicly. I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Bailey?
I just wanted to agree with Ms. Rodrick's saying. You know, I felt the same way, like she was saying. Obviously, I'm new on the committee, but it's definitely something that I looked at and we did have a conversation and I called you and something we talked about. But I really do appreciate you stepping forward and including that.
Thank you.
Item 12.5.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pereira.
Between the tall guys, I don't always get.
I know. I have trouble seeing down this no curved table.
I do appreciate, I agree with Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Rodrick's. I appreciate you saying that maybe it should have been mentioned. I don't think it was this intent, and this is just me, everybody has their own opinions and that's cool. I do not think it was this intentional hiding of numbers. I mean, anybody can view the budget. If you look at that page, it's like, it says 12.8, it gives deductions, it gives 10 million. It's really not. And if you ain't going to dig deep to see. But I, as a new member, assume that this is something we generally did. So when it came to, when Mr. Aguirre brought it to my attention that that wasn't what we regularly did. And then sometimes, it's not what it is, it's just the perception of what people can conjure in their mind that it is. So I think we do, as committee members, you know, have to be, I think, whatever information Mr. Aguirre wants, he should certainly receive, but I think we should be careful about the way we express our opinions up here if we're, you know, when you don't have fact that something has been done wrong and you're just assuming, or maybe you do have fact, but you can't share it, I have no idea. But certainly that went down several times during that meeting. I don't think it's a productive way to handle things. And so I'm glad, Superintendent, as much as I'm glad you came forward saying, next time, we're going to, I'll handle that differently, I also appreciate you acknowledging that it could have been handled better by some of the committee members. So hopefully going forward, that's what we do and absolutely our jobs to ask questions. Sometimes it's not what you say, it's how you say it. With that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. So I made my statement about what I felt about the budget and the process, but I feel compelled to respond because I feel like a little subtle dig, let's just call it a dig, sent at me because I did my homework and how I brought it out with passion. And I can tell you that I looked at this budget and when I saw that, I was actually, I couldn't believe my eyes to say that this would even happen. So to give subtle digs on the committee, I don't think are appropriate. At the end of the day, we're all going to have a chance to vote. We're all going to have a chance to vote. We have an account, a reserve account, that we got that reserved paying for special education, out-of-district tuitions. That's where we got the reserve from. So each and every member of this committee, as well as each and every member of this administration, is going to be able to sit here on May 15th, when we vote for this and say, yes, I think we should take out $1.5 million out of that account and pay for the city's burden on transportation, which is the law. We're going to make that decision. Each and every person can make that decision. When I highlighted things in the budget is so that we can get at least the facts out there. So people can make their own determination at that time relative to the facts before us. And in this case, the facts were, they weren't told to us. They were hidden and they didn't come right out and say, here's what we're going to propose to do. So we're all going to have a chance to do that. But I don't apologize for one second for doing my homework, doing my due diligence, and looking at the line items in a budget. I won't apologize for that today and I won't apologize for anything that I said at the last meeting. I did what I did to try to highlight some things. If no one else wants to say anything, that's up to you. But I highlighted the fact of we're going to take $1.5 million out of an account for the out-of-district tuitions and I'm against it. I'm going to be against it today. I'm going to be against it on May 15th and everybody else can take their vote at that time. With that, I yield.
If I can just add, though, the hearings were for the purpose of getting feedback, right? So, and we went through the process. In some instances, you gave feedback, whether it was to a school or to a department. So if there's feedback that we have to look at it differently, that was a proposed budget and a proposed item. And I'm going to reiterate it again. There was no intent to hide anything. The way it was done, obviously, we don't all agree, but if you're going to, if anyone on this committee is going to give feedback and say, can we look at that and look at how we do something else or whatever, we can do that. So the whole point of having hearings is to get feedback and make adjustments as we go along. So it's not, we don't have the hearings, just do it. You know that we've made adjustments in the budget proposal in the previous year and, you know, not opposed to that, but that's what we're here for, is to have those discussions. We did change the format. It would have been highlighted when each department proposed it, but it should have been highlighted in writing. But I mean, that's why we're having budget hearings, is to get feedback from this committee. We don't have to wait until May 15th to get that feedback.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so I totally understand. So we did provide, at least I did, I provided my feedback on that particular situation. And now that you've gotten a chance to see it, your administration, your central office, other folks have seen it. We've highlighted the issue. So I'm curious if you're still going to stand behind that transfer. And if you don't have that answer today, I ask you to go back to your team and see if everyone agrees that this is what we should be doing and report back to us prior to May 15th so we're not having a debate on May 15th about what we're going to do. If you choose to say, as the superintendent of schools, I believe that we can take $1.5 million and shift it over to transportation out of that account, if you, your leadership team or anybody else wants to stand up and say, yes, I agree with, that's a smart decision for the educational value, then please do. Just beyond record is saying, this is what I'm proposing. That's all I'm asking. I'm going to vote against it. I'm telling you that ahead of time. But all I'm asking is that you take the feedback, which I know you do, go back to your team, try to figure it out, and say whether we really want to go forward with this or not. And the sooner that you can come to that realization, please let the committee know. With that, I yield. Thank you.
I do have to say something. I wasn't going to, it's so nice of Mr. Aguirre to give her permission to go back to her team and talk to them about what they want to. team and talk to them about what they wanna talk about to improve the Fall River Public Schools. If you remember the last meeting, Mr. Aguirre told us if he knew the money was gonna go to transport our special needs students, he would've drained the account, he said. And I said, "That's really a good use of money." His idea to use money is to give $40,000 in raises to everybody on this stage. That will help the children. Hire a $200,000 a year's deputy superintendent to help the children. Hire a $150,000 assistant director of sped to help the children. He'll spend $400,000 to help the children on jobs he thinks are important that aren't even coming from the superintendent or her team. My position is that when we're gonna be recommending those kind of positions, those kind of raises, they're gonna come from her. I have total confidence in her and her ability to run the district. And I'm extremely delighted that we added another key piece tonight. But for someone to willy-nilly throw out jobs and raises at prices that are unseen in the district and then to criticize someone else for wanting to use money to transport students and then say, "It's for the children", my position is helping the kids with busing is more helpful than these high-priced administrative positions that he throws out willy-nilly. And maybe he's using that to drain the money like he said he would. His idea was to drain that money, "Don't do anything to help the kids on the bus, I can drain it." He's not gonna drain anything. She's gonna make the proposal and we're gonna vote on it. So, my position is he can have all the ideas he wants, but he's gonna come to the committee and we're gonna vote. Make a motion to drain the money, Mr. Aguirre, and get your four votes and then good luck to you. That's how this government works. But for him to say, "I would've drained it", he's not gonna drain anything. He's not gonna drain anything. He's gonna work with the committee and we're gonna work together to do what's best for the kids in the district. And I did get mad at him last time for the yelling and I asked him to quiet down and I'm glad his ten, his tenor tonight is much better. But at the same time, his ideas for where the money should go and the district's ideas may be different, so we'll have votes on those things. But right now, I'm confident in the superintendent and her team to do what's best for the kids in the districts.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I, can I, can I, just between you gentlemen? Make it clear. If I oppose something you're saying, I speak up. If I kind of agree with you, I sit here because you're saying what needs to be said or my colleague to the right is saying what needs to be said. So, don't assume I think the 1.5 million should come out because I never said that. That's something I have to think about and listen to and if I think it's the right decision, I'll vote for it. And if I don't, then I won't. So, and I, I have zero problem with any of my colleagues asking questions. That is what our job is. I encourage it. I learn from it. I am new at this. I've only been doing this for a little over a year. I'm definitely not the smartest person on this stage. But I'd like to learn from you, so questions I have no problem with. But when we accuse people of doing things that we have no proof, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with that. And quite frankly, at the last meeting, it was also said that you don't think everybody here takes their job seriously? Well, you know what? That's a slap in the face from somebody you're on a team with. I don't know if you're talking about me, you were talking about my colleagues who talk less than me or talk more than, I have no idea you're talking about. But to make a comment on this stage when we're all trying to work together and say that you don't think everybody here takes their job seriously? I, I, I can only assume you don't think any of us are gonna get reelected. 'Cause if you do, you're working real hard to get me a huge raise for not taking my job seriously. I do take my job seriously. I may joke a little or be a little lighter, but don't think I don't take my job seriously. I may not talk as much or ask as many questions, but don't think I don't take my job seriously. And I'm gonna assume that everybody up on this stage takes their job seriously, whether they agree with you or disagree with you. That actually isn't a determining factor of whether somebody takes their job seriously. So, I just, the accusations are not okay. We all have a vote, we can vote on that 1.5. We're all gonna think about it, we're gonna ask questions, we're gonna rationalize it in our own heads and then we're gonna come and vote. That's it. If I, if I vote, if, if I get convinced by the superintendent that this is what we should do and I vote yes, it doesn't mean I'm not taking my job seriously. It means I agree to giving that money, if that's what I choose to do. I may also vote no, I don't know yet. But I do know something. I take my job seriously and I'm pretty sure everybody else here does. So, that's what I mean by, I don't need you to apologize for asking questions, of course not. It's your job. But sometimes think about the way you, you talk to the people here that you're trying to work with. And with that, I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Rodrick's?
So, I'm just gonna say this 'cause this conversation has completely been derailed and I would like to just get back to the conversation that we were having. Making accusations and throwing them across the table isn't helpful for anybody. And so, we've completely shifted or completely drifted away from what our actual conversation was. And so, I would like to get back to that and that's why I'm making this comment right now, that the back and forth between everyone here, not helpful whatsoever. So, I'm gonna sit back and hopefully let this conversation unfold and come to an end because, yeah, everybody at this table has a vote to make. That vote will be made in the future. Everyone at this table, I believe, doesn't do this for fun 'cause I'm sure that everybody at this table has other obligations that they could be doing, right? But I'm assuming that everyone at this table is here because they want to be here. So, I, I don't think throwing accusations at people is useful. And I would like to get back to the actual topic at hand. And with that, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
Yes, just to follow up on your comments, Mr. Chairman. So, when I look at the budget, I see that the city of Fall River is gonna put in the minimum total, whether we add one position, 176 positions, whether this committee gets an increase in pay that they haven't received in 20 years. You and the administration are not gonna put one red cent into education than you have to, whether we add positions or not. So, I did suggest that we fund positions, absolutely. I did suggest that we pay people appropriately to get qualified people in. But you and the administration are not gonna spend one red cent on education more than you have to by law. So, when I talked about drain, draining that account, is we can do that. We absolutely could be replacing the entire amount to pay for out-of-district tuitions. We could do that. We don't need to have that reserve account, but it's a way to have a little bit of stabilization. So, for you to sit there and try to say that I'm willy-nilly looking to give raises to people, that's totally absurd. You and the city are not gonna put in one red cent more than for education. Not one red cent, no matter what our votes are. So, that's why I would suggest the positions that we're talking about, the positions for special education. It has nothing to do with, you're not gonna put in one red cent more than you have to. And I wanna hear from the administration. I wanna hear from all the assistant superintendents that we hired. I wanna hear from all the directors. I wanna hear from all the principals to see if they agree as well with taking the money out because I think it's important. When it's convenient, we ask everybody's opinion out there and then other times, we just say silent and not, not let it go. So, when I ask these questions to the superintendent, I'd like to get feedback from all of our administration if they think that that's an okay thing. With that, I yield.
Yeah. That's not your call, Mr. Aguirre. It's Ms. Ponce, Ms. Ponce and her team, they can make the call. I trust them. That's how I look at it. 12.5 is a discussion and vote to approve to set salary ranges for the approved reorganization job descriptions as presented by Ken Pacheco, chief operating officer. Welcome up after that, Ken.
So, the suggested salary ranges are based on a variety of, of factors. One being the union in which their particular employees are in. Some of those salaries are higher than others. It's some, something to do with the complexity of the work that they're doing and also with the amount of people that they are overseeing. Those numbers will keep us, I know we have issues with, with compression in, in salaries between the union and ESNONS. And this will put us far enough ahead of any of those issues without putting us too far, you know, and, and again, compression on the opposite side of this group getting up to senior staff. So, this is my proposal based on those factors for your, for your approval. And also, if I could, I'd like to move on these as quickly as possible, some immediately and others when the budget flips in July.
You wanna tell us which ones are immediate or do you wanna just take them all one by one?
So, the director of maintenance position, obviously, is something that I'd need immediately.
Okay.
The director of custodial services, I currently have someone filling in, but that would again, be something that I would like to do. I do have some flexibility with that position because I have a vacant position within the budget. So, I do have flexibility with that one. Assistant director of custodial services, I don't necessarily have to do that one until July unless funds are available. Director of transportation, I do have a need to fill this position. I will work with the current coordinator to make a smooth transition. The director of safety and security, that one is absolutely necessary. Tomorrow would be too late. And director of campus services, I would like to have in place moving forward with the new hires.
Okay. Do we have any questions on this proposal? Does someone wanna make a, I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre?
So, which of these are vacant?
The assistant, none of these are vacant as of today. The assistant director of custodial services, I'm going to have it mimic the assistant director of environmental services. That position was left unfilled. So, I have the capacity to use those funds and I would hire the director before I would hire an assistant.
And the other one is new, like the campus services is totally new?
The campus services is a new position.
So, that would start?
Director of safety and security is a new position.
And you're saying that you would start these July 1?
Some of them, July 1. I would like to start as many as possible as quickly as possible so that I can have stability coming into the summer. But whatever I can't, I understand and I'll work around that.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to figure out which positions would be up. So, I think you should fill them all as soon as we wrote on this because we have the, the funds so that when you do your committees or whatever and you hire the right person, as far as I'm concerned, you should hire them. Why wait till July 1 if we had the process earlier?
I agree.
But what I'm looking at though is just knowing some of the, and you talked about compression between the salaries and, and, you know, how much has research went into looking at where these are starting when we look at any of the positions and what people get? So...
As I said, a couple of them, a couple of those positions are going to be at the bottom number or a little above depending on the person that comes in with experience. I, again, I have some compression issues on, on one or two of them that I'm concerned with. Other than that, the, the salary range will work well and it'll give us a three-year cushion, if not more.
Yeah. You know that, you know, you, you talked about you're up against it with compression and knowing that we shouldn't, nobody should be just giving our raises willy-nilly. I don't think anybody thinks that that's a good idea to give willy-nilly raises. But when we're creating a situation here where we're creating new job descriptions, I think now is the time to actually fix some of that issue. So, you know, you look at the director of maintenance at 85,000. I don't have the budget book in front of me, but I believe the electricians, plumbers and all them are at 80,000 or 82,000 in the budget, something like that, or at least a few of them?
Yes.
So, we're gonna pay a director 85, assuming that somebody comes in like first step, let's say. So, if I'm a licensed plumber in the district or whatever and I wanna apply for this job, when we look at it, we'd say, "So, the starting salary's 85 to 105. You're gonna be in the job for the first year, so you'd start on the low end of that." I don't think necessarily, I think that's what you're talking about with the compression.
Yes.
So, like I said, not giving willy-nilly raises. I think well-thought-out proposals like this should just come with what you need in order to get a qualified person into those jobs, not necessarily just throwing numbers out.
Though, these are not thrown out. So, I've done the work in the individual bargaining units to know that some of these positions are a product of a position's, a person's title within the union. A lead, for instance. So, a lead is going to throw that number off. It won't, it won't compress because it'll, it'll be a moving target always. So, there'll always be a space. It may not be as large as some of the others. We also have to be cognizant of the other side of this because some of these numbers are gonna eventually push other numbers. And as much as I would like a raise, I don't need to do it right now.
But what I'm, maybe it's me, when I see 85 to 105, I see, you're not, you don't have experience being the director, you're gonna start off at the lower end. And I just think that there's not enough range, and we've talked about this with the principal and vice principal, to go, jump to that next level to get $3,000 or $4,000. You're not gonna get the people to apply or, and you go out in the industry to get them folks to come in. So, we're gonna end up with mediocrity or just accepting what we have. And I think we've done that for too long in some of these departments. So, you know, now is the time to be able to, especially with those directors' positions of putting it a little higher, in my opinion. You're, you're saying you did the research, you must went over the, with the superintendent and you think these numbers are gonna get you the candidates you need? I'm guessing.
Yes. But again, if it's the will of this committee and the number needs to be bumped up or, or dropped, it's the will of the committee. These are my suggestions. We can move either way, but I...
I understand that. I'm just trying to get some feedback.
Yes.
Where did they come from, you know? So, Madam Superintendent, what do you think on the, at least those top ones?
Well, we went through the process as Mr. Pacheco was saying. I, I do think that we're trying to be prudent. I think that some of those positions that you're referring to, whether it's an electrician or a plumber or whatever, if they're a lead, it's gonna boost up their salary and that's why they're there. But not everybody's going to be at that rate, right? So, it, there is, there is a buffer in between there. So, the 85 is reasonable for somebody coming in into that role. We thought those salaries were reasonable, certainly, you know, you can give us feedback on that. But we went back and forth and tried to, you know, create a range that we, wasn't just a, a, a small, where we're going to be up against in just a couple of years, a large enough gap and was also gonna be respectful.
Yeah. When you look at it, even with marginal overtime or reasonable overtime, you're gonna have, you're gonna, if we approve these as is, we're gonna have workers getting paid with marginal overtime for these folks to work for salary, as many hours as they need to get the job done. And they're gonna make less money than the people that are actually working under them.
Unfortunately, Ms. Aguirre, I worked for the city for 10 years and maybe four of those 10 years, some of my employees were making more money than I was. It's just the way it is with overtime. There's no way to control that my salary is controlled. ESNONS don't make overtime. And I take that coming into this. So, what I'm saying is, is I can't say that that person in the contract who's a lead making $80,000, I'm gonna make sure that they don't get any overtime because I don't want them bumping against the director's salary. For that matter, I would need to bump all of these salaries by a minimum of $10,000 to make sure that that never happens. But these are three-year projections, so this is not the last time we're gonna look at these. And again, as I said, if this committee chooses to bump by 5 or 10,000 on that bottom number, by all means, as long as the top number moves the same way so that I have a three-year look ahead because whatever, whatever the unions are gonna receive in benefits over the next few years is a moving target and so will the salary increases for the ESNONS.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, just that what you said about the city and having workers, it doesn't make that right.
No, I know it doesn't, but I mean it's...
It probably stunk to be in that situation for you.
Overtime, overtime is overtime.
I get it, but I think... I get it, but I think we need to be cognizant of, why would anybody take a promotion if that's what they can do without the stress of the job? That's all I'm saying. And I think you'd understand that, that—
I do.
It just is—it's a salary, and, you know, look at the Campus Services. Look at all the groundskeepers are $59,000 before any overtime in the budget. So $59, $70? Like, you know, they're going to supervise those folks, you know? I think you understand what I'm saying. I just think that we've got to be careful of making sure that the bosses are going to work for salary, and it's different when it's $85 versus $125, $130.
I know.
You know? When you're at $85, and you make $10,000 in overtime, you can make that very easily in these type of jobs, and you're going to make more. And I think that just poses, you know, a problem. So if you think it's—this is your recommendation, the superintendent seems to be backing it up, I'll go with it, but just food for thought. With that, I yield.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, and second. Deb, could you call the roll on all of them, please?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Abstain.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes. It's fine. Discussion and vote to approve two RFQs. 1207 Globe Street, for an oversight design of up to 15 classrooms for our pre-K program.
Motion approved.
Motion to second. Any discussion on going forward with Globe Street?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Agia?
This—I know this is related to the pre-K, and I keep on hopping on this, but I asked the superintendent last time about the subcommittee. Are we ready for that, just so we can—I feel like this type of stuff is fine. I'm going to vote for this, but the pre-K, I keep on being a pain about it, but I think it's something that's that important. So I don't know if we have an update, but—
Yep. So we will make sure that on Friday, there's a suggestion for a subcommittee for pre-K. I agree. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and it needs to be done in that committee.
Yeah, we want to build it and come—I don't want to build it, and then say we don't have it. So you get what I'm saying.
Yep.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes. 1207, is a discussion and vote to approve the pre-K update, renewal of existing contracts.
Motion to approve.
As presented by Kristin Ferris, Director of Early Childhood. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second.
Can we get a quick summary of that?
Yeah, Ms. Ferris.
Hi, good evening. So this is looking forward into next year, as we're still exploring more long-term solutions. Projected numbers for next year continue to grow. So with that, what we're asking for is to be able to continue leasing the space at the old Montessori School on Eastern Avenue, where the Early Learning Center currently is for next school year, to be able to keep those classrooms there and running through next school year, and also to continue to keep the option of the overflow classrooms at the Boys and Girls Club if they are needed.
Any questions, Ms. Ferris? Mr. Agia?
Just logistically, are these non-bid? Like, you know, we had to go out to bid for space, and now we're just extending it without a bid? Is that—was that in the specs?
So because it's all set up, there is some leeway with rentals and leases of a building that can't be duplicated for the dollar amount. So we will be looking to redo a lease for one more year in that particular site.
Yeah, maybe if you can just get us a one pager on that. I'm just—as—I don't disagree with what you're saying, but like the—we did have to take that process in emergency to get it under—the—to bid. And now we're just saying, "Oh, you got it, so now you just get it extended." That's all. I want to make sure that we're covered with it. So, Ms. Pacico, if you could do that, I appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Do we have a motion to second?
We do.
We do. Deb, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes. 1208, is a discussion and vote to approve the job descriptions for the Special Education Department, as referred by the Special Education Alternative Education Subcommittee, and presented by Laura E. Oberchain, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. Ms. Oberchain.
Good evening. In an effort to strengthen—sorry. In an effort to strengthen and move our special education program forward, one of the things we need to look at are some of our job descriptions, to make sure that they are clear and really reflective of the roles. We've started that process. So tonight, you received several proposed job descriptions, and—as well as the original job description with the annotations, to show you where those revisions were made. Many of the job descriptions before you still have the same responsibilities, but they're much more clear and specific to the role. This is important, not only for our existing staff, but for any potential new applicants that we get, so that they really understand what the role entails and what we need from them. In your packet, you had six positions listed. Four out of those six positions are ready for you to consider. Those positions are the Cluster Coordinator, the Lead School Psychologist, the Lead Related Service Provider, and a Special Education Supervisor. At this point, I'm requesting that we hold a vote for the Special Education Team Chair and Clerk, just because there's some more work that we need to do with staff. But I think it's important for you to see where we are, and where I envision us going in regards to these positions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Agia?
Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing these forward. So we had—went to the subcommittee, and then I had asked that you have the old and the new. One of the things on the first one, the Cluster Coordinator, that I'm wondering is, the job description talks about supporting students and staff in substantially separate programs across the district, through consultation model and coaching. But in the performance responsibilities, as I was comparing the two of them today, it doesn't highlight the substantially separate programming piece, and I don't know if that's covered in your oversight. So Cluster Coordinators are other—potentially other things than the substantially separate programs? Am I saying that right?
So what I—the Cluster Coordinator role, yes, it was envisioned initially for substantially separate programming, but when I look at what the capabilities would be in our inclusion program as well, they should be afforded the opportunity to work with all of the schools. So when I think about the vision of a Cluster Coordinator, to be more of that teacher support, that academic support, and then the BCBA is that behavioral support, that behavioral component. If we pair them up with, say, sister schools, then the schools can utilize the assets of both of those positions to support all the needs of the schools. Because what we ran into this year, and many of the principals were very vocal about it, that both this Cluster Coordinator and the BCBA, right, they have different skill sets. So at different times, buildings could benefit from each of those skill sets. So I'm not sure of your question, though, Mr. Agia, as far as the performance?
No. So what—when we had created these positions, it was with the idea that the Cluster Coordinator was going to be, for lack of a better way to say it, a resident expert in the special program at that school. That's how I, in layman's terms, would say that it was. That obviously wasn't happening.
Right.
At the same time, it was talked about as being an administrator that could evaluate the staff to assist the principal in the room. If I'm a principal, and I have a large population of special programs, I need extra help to manage that program with some authority that can do the observations and the like. That's how I envisioned it when we created it.
Yes.
So all I'm suggesting is, if I'm looking at the one that says approved by, I guess that's the recommended one, you know, the one with the blue marks on it, where you highlight what the comment was, is the old one, I believe.
Yes, it is.
So if you—if you look at the top of the second one, it says the job description talks about substantially separate programs, all I'm suggesting is, I think that that probably should say special programs, so it encompasses all.
Sure.
Like, at the bottom, it says supervisors and evaluates staff in special programs. It sort of makes it a larger umbrella, whereas—and I think it might make more sense than if we just left it as staff in substantially separate programs. So you could have a Cluster Coordinator that is overseeing a program that's not necessarily substantially separate. It could be behavior rooms, and whatever that—
Right.
Whatever you would want. So—
Yep.
I think that that would be a wise change, but with that same comment, under the performance responsibilities, do you feel this is enough so that you could hold them accountable, as their boss, to do the things that need to be done in all of those special programs?
Yes, because, again, they won't be working in—on an island by themselves, right? And the supervisor role is going to have a much greater presence in a lot of these programs, schools in general, and just oversight of these Cluster Coordinators, and making sure that what I envision, or what my team and I build, is coming to fruition day in and day out in a consistent format. And that's really what this was about, was building that consistency and capacity across the district.
Yeah, and the comment that was listed on some of the concerns was, they didn't have a solid understanding of the role and their responsibilities is a problem.
Right.
That is a major problem, when you look at accountability and that. So I totally agree with what you're saying, but I would like to just make a motion to replace the substantially separate programs, to call it special programs.
Sure.
Mr. Agia, can you repeat that motion, please?
So I'm not sure if we're going to do them individually or all together, but regardless of that, I would like to—on the Cluster Coordinator Department head, I would just like to change the wording under the job description, where it says substantially separate programs, and replace that with special programs.
Okay, so that's on the first one, Cluster Coordinators. Is it a slash?
It's just the description of the job at the top.
Just taking the sub-separate word out.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second on changing the name. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes. Any further discussion?
Well, you need—
Yeah, finish the others up, Ms. Oberchain, on the first.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, the other three.
They have to take a vote on the others.
We have to vote on all?
There's two that we're pulling out.
Oh, two we're pulling out? I was in the bathroom, I missed.
Yes, we're pulling out.
I did. What did you pull out, I'm sorry?
We pulled out Team Chairperson and Clerk.
Oh, okay. All right. No, I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia?
On the second one, the Lead Psychologist, and this is something that I had mentioned in the budget, when it's under salary, because these are—obviously would change, like, one of them somewhere had the salary listed, I think we should put the salary in, rather than having it refer back to any of the—whatever the—it talks about.
We don't need to vote on that, do we? Just put the salary in form.
But I'm saying, when you advertise a position. So here, we don't advertise our positions, right? In my opinion, we put the starting salary under salary range. We don't put a range. So looking at the salary range, how this is listed, is how this stuff gets posted for the public to see to apply. So whether it's this job, or a special education teacher, or whatever, if you look on the website to see how we're recruiting people, we use these as the template.
Right, this is a stipend position.
Yeah.
Right.
But the stipend is defined.
Right.
So next year, if it goes up, the stipend would just be changed.
Yep.
But I think as—to be consistent, in every one of these, the salary should be what the range is. Because on the website, it says salary range, and it usually has the First Step, which is not a good way to recruit people, because we're going to pay more than the First Step. So I'm only suggesting that as we go through—
We take the stipends and add them.
We should be putting the salaries in, rather than saying, "Refer to other places." That's all. With that, I yield.
Anything further? So can we vote on these all together?
Yeah, I'd make a motion—we already voted for the Cluster Coordinator, so I'd make a motion for the other three.
The other three. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion to second. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia?
Just a comment on the ones that we have—we pulled out. So we had approved these at the subcommittee to go forward, and I can respect the fact that there's some work that still needs to be done. But I'd like to make a recommendation that we do that work and report back to the committee at the next full school committee meeting, because I think it's important to move these things forward. So whether we need another subcommittee meeting or not, I would suggest we bring it to the full committee, so everybody can see it. But kicking this can down the road is not going to help us. We need to do it now. So whether—if that update is—we're getting closer, we're not getting closer. Along the way, I would think that we should get some data from other places, if you can send that stuff to the committee, so we can make a more informed decision. Case loads, how many this—what is the vision, so that we can get to see. If you need a subcommittee meeting, that's great, but I don't have the data that I can do to make a determination on this at this present time.
Sure.
But over the next month, if we get an update—
Sure.
—at a minimum, I think it'll help us.
Sure, I can give you an update. And it's going to involve some training, too, and to get people feeling confident in their ability to do some of the responsibilities. So that's why I'm also asking for the delay, because I need some time to do that training and to work with staff to figure out. But I'm happy to give you an update in a month. I don't envision it being ready for the vote in a month. But, again, I will happily give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further on that? 12.9 is the Electric Bus Update, as presented by me, Chairman of the School Committee. I just want you to know, we are moving along with this $4 million grant, but bus—electric bus construction is very, very backed up. We had two proposals submitted to us. They were both more than we thought we could get in cost per bus. So we ended up having to reduce the request from 11 buses down to 10 buses with the charging station. One company was over and above the other by a lot, so we're going to go with them. We got our 10-bus order in. I'm here, and it could be as long as a year out. And we're also applied for some additional buses, or we are working on that with our federal partners, who have advised us that there may be some more buses available. We're also partnering with this first swath of buses with Wayling City, but we are looking at our other vendors also. I think it's the way to go, if we're able to get these buses and the charging stations coupled together as one. And we're going to keep pushing forward to see what we can do to bring some electric school buses to the Fall River. Mr. Agia?
Madam Superintendent, how does this affect us?
Right now, it doesn't. It's a city project right now.
I'm just giving an update. It's an update, Deb. There's no vote or anything.
Eventually, it will be part of our transportation for—so it'll impact costs, right, for transportation. But right now, it doesn't. It's in the planning process.
Right, but I've said this for months now. We keep hearing about the electric buses. It's a city project, it's a city project. The school committee has contracts with vendors that we voted on.
Right.
So how does a school committee and the school department not become part of this process? I don't—I just don't get it. How is this going to work? What are the buses? What happens when the buses end? What's the shelf life of the buses? What happens to the contracts we currently have in existence? Like, I think the school department and the school committee, ultimately with a vote, votes for the contracts. So I don't understand why we're—we get no information on this. We just say, "We're going to wait for the buses. It's electric, it's $4 million," and it's got to affect the contracts that have fallen out of review. We're out of the loop, totally out of the loop. That's why I asked the superintendent, that's all.
But I'm just giving you an update, Kevin. We're not there yet. We did get the grant. We do have a company. We're moving forward, as I said. We're at least a year out, as I said. We are working with our partners, who have contracts with public school transportation. And when the time comes that we move to a next step, we'll keep the committee informed before we do anything or sign anything that's going to affect the contract that comes in front of this committee.
The gentleman that signed this is Richard Labrie. How much is he getting paid, the consultant?
I don't know. No, I don't think I got billed yet by Mr. Labrie.
Can we please get a—
and when the time comes that we move to a next step, we'll keep the committee informed before we do anything or sign anything that's going to affect the contract that comes in front of this committee.
The gentleman that signed this is Richard Labrie. How much is he getting paid, the consultant?
I don't know. No, I don't think I got billed yet by Mr. Labrie.
Can we please get a...
It's a city contract, Deb.
It's a public document.
No, I know.
If you say how much the guy's getting paid. So the reason why I ask is, Mr. Labrie was part of the bid process that we had. I can speak, and I've said this to the gentleman right in front of us at a public meeting, that I don't think he gave us good advice, I don't think that he was worth the money that we were paying him, even though it was not that much, but I keep on seeing his name coming up, that we keep on using the guy. So if somebody's going to say, no, he's a great guy, he's doing great work for us, whatever, then come up and say it. I just see the guy's name again, and he's consulting with us on things that don't, this one, not this one, but our own transportation, that make no sense. This same gentleman recommended five years ago or more that we spent $250,000 on the transportation software because it was going to save us the routes and everything else, and we're not even using the software that we paid the $250 for. So that's why I don't care for the guy, because I don't think he gave us good advice, but that's a fact. If anybody wants to check it, you can go check it, because I have asked for that. We log in once a day from the transportation, once a day, to check something, and that's it. We don't use it to help us like we were sold when he came before us. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you. Twelve ten is a discussion and vote to approve the third quarter revolving fund report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Almeida.
So in front of you, you have the updated, the third quarter revolving report. The balance across the revolving funds is 12.1 million at this time. To date, we've spent just under 9 million, and we've received just under 9 million. All the funds have positive balances. With this, with this report, we will be transferring, with an approval, we'll be transferring just over $21,000 into the youth of schools account from overtime related to outside overtime for sounds light, technology, custodians, so on and so forth, and that balance will be 454,26105. With that, I ask for your vote, please.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the third quarter revolving fund? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve eleven is a discussion and vote to approve the quarterly budget update as presented by Kevin Almeida, our Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve quarterly budget update.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that one either? Mr. Aguirre?
Just in rough numbers, when you look at the last, this is the, we've got one more quarter left to go.
Yes, sir.
So you could probably have a good idea of what the end of the year is going to look like as far as funding.
Yep.
How much last year did we carry over in prepaid special ed tuition?
One, 1.6 or 1.7 million.
And is there a number that's the maximum that we can carry over?
That we can prepay?
Yeah.
The maximum we can prepay is a quarter, so whatever a quarter equates to. So it's probably going to be closer to $2 million for this year with the inflation on the tuitions.
So we're close to the maximum...
Yep.
...of prepaying the tuition. And I ask that because it's relevant to the $3 million in surplus that we had for the outer district. So when that happens, we can't, we can't prepay tuitions to have that be a stabilization. So really, the only stabilization that we can have for that account is what you have the $3 million in. Circuit breaker, we can do that.
Correct.
Because if you paid the whole circuit breaker reimbursement towards the tuitions, we would just have $3 million left over. We'd have to figure out a way as the committee to figure out what we would do with, you know, how to fund some of those projects.
Yep.
So when, when you look at, you're still projecting the 1.5 or more, you said up to, we could do the two, $2 million, but you think that that, we're going to be at that number of savings? I'm not going to hold you to it, but I'm saying that projecting-wise, is it, does it look like we're going to have a significant amount of prepaid tuition as part of the budget? Because now, May 15th, we're going to vote on the budget, that number's going to...
So my plan is to prepay tuitions out of the budget, as we normally do. So that's something I am going to suggest in May that we do, so that we can, so I need to cost out and have some time to figure out what that's actually going to be to bring forward to you, but my, my best estimate at this time is anywhere between 1.5 million to $2 million, given what we know at this time.
So we're still going to do that, is your thinking?
Yes.
And the 1.5 that's at the bottom for the Phase Three of the Durfey Fields is not that, that's separate?
That's something that we, we're going to request that we use funding from this year's budget to cover everything associated with the outside on the Durfey Fields.
That money, where's that money coming from, is my point? Is it just from residual surpluses throughout the...
It's with surpluses across, yes.
So, but that's legit money that we have to complete the...
Yes, sir.
And then phase, the next phase would be, we start that one from scratch.
So with that, that should cover all of the athletic field work here, and assuming that the costs don't go crazy.
The new, like, the next round, so we'll be done at that point.
Yes, sir.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Can we get a vote to approve the quarterly budget? I need a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second.
We already got it.
Okay. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Looking for a motion and a second on the informational retirements, appointments, resignations. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve 13.1 through 13.4.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee? Hearing none?
I, I had something that I needed to clarify.
I'm sorry, Ms. Roderick?
So I needed to clarify a statement that I made earlier when we were talking about the, the budget, the updates on the budget, because I don't think I accurately conveyed my thoughts. So I was concerned about the direction that the conversation took, because it very much became, or at least it seemed like it became, about personal feelings, and that really isn't useful for anything. But to start a comment with a sarcastic nod to Mr. Aguirre giving permission for the superintendent to speak with her team, and then bring it in other stretched interpretations about feedback that was provided at the last meeting or outside this meeting, to me felt very inappropriate. And I know that when I conveyed that, it didn't come off that way, but I wanted to be very clear in what I meant. I stated in my piece last time about the transportation costs and the way it played out, and I reiterated that I sincerely appreciated that it was highlighted tonight, that it wasn't highlighted before, right? That, that means something to me, but I'm hoping that we can move forward without that level of hostility, of negativity, because I firmly believe that everybody at this table is here trying to make the decisions that they believe are right, and I don't believe that anyone's playing a gotcha game. The two things can be true at the same time. So I needed to clarify that, because again, I don't think I conveyed myself accurately, but with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Saad, do we have, are any reasons to go to a second session?
There would be, Mayor.
Do you want to read them first?
National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve the executive session minutes for March 20, 2023, regular school committee meeting. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forward School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists, specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government employees, including without limitation professionals, parent workers and clerks of the Forward School System that are paid from federal and state grants and represented by the Forward Public Schools Government Programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically the new Assistant Superintendent of Students Support Services and Strategic Integration Forward School Department to be selected and appointed by the school committee. Dr. Bronhardt is the Superintendent of Schools' sole recommended candidate for appointment to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services and Strategic